Meeting of the Corvail City Council is ordered. September 25th, 2018. Roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Present.
Gross.
Here.
Gill.
Present.
Dodd.
Here.
Lori, Goodrich.
Sorry, Goodrich, sorry.
Here. That's fine.
Okay, all council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, acting city administrator, city attorney, and some staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Gill.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda is approved. Item four, citizen comment. To time on the agenda to speak on anything that's not already on the agenda. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll move on to item five, Auditor's Parcel 2016009. This is the third and final consideration of ordinance to change the land use plan to medium-density residential. Let's introduce the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2018-1018. An ordinance amending the Corvail community plan to reflect certain property generally known as Auditor's Parcel 2016009, Corvail, Iowa, to be designated medium-density residential use in place of parks, green space use. Introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gill. Discussion? I'll just mention to the audience that's here that's interested in this project, thank you, we did get, received multiple letters since the last meeting and several emails as well. So we've, we were talking, we've all received those and duly noted them, so thank you for that. Any other comments from the council?
I had one. I just wanted to do a little follow-up because there was a lot of discussion about, you know, transferring this and land over was going to really considerably decrease the amount of green space in our community. And so, since I'm on the Parks and Rec Commission, I did a little more investigation on that. And just so that we have the numbers clear, we currently have 290 acres of developed parkland, which is being mowed with amenities, and then an additional 1,100 acres of open green space within the city. Thank you.
Jill, I just wanted to ask, there are some protected areas too, is that correct? Can you speak a little bit to some of the protected areas?
I don't believe that, I mean, that might be in there, like the wetlands and different areas like that, but that is our total number that was confirmed today as the amount of green space in addition to our parks that we currently mow and have additional amenities in that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the number, do you have a mileage, is it, that we have like 26 miles of trails?
That sounds about right. Last week, we went on a golf trip, tour, to go and look at some of the different ponds and the different trails and different amenities that are in the back that I, I've been to parts of Corvail that I didn't even know existed, and it's just stunning. So for people who haven't been on the trails, get out there and check those out, it's absolutely amazing, the number of miles that we went. So it was, it was a very interesting night, I wish all of us could do that, so.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Just like to comment that this vote tonight, if approved, is the third and final vote for the land use only. As far as any development that comes forward, that'll be in the future for PUD development, and that's when all the details will be available and available for review and then discussion about any details of any future development that could happen on the site.
Go through the same process.
The same process, there'd be input, and there'd be a public hearing at planning zoning and a public hearing at council meeting as well.
And there, yeah, so there would still be, and we would have three readings of that proposal as well?
That's correct.
Okay. Roll call.
Gross.
No.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance passes its third consideration with Gross voting no. Item six, Lot 11 Oakdale Research Park in Auditor's Parcel 2018053. This is also a third and final consideration of a building site, if I recall, yes, out in Oakdale Research Park. Don?
Ordinance number 2018-1019, an ordinance amending the Corvail zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number 664, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corvail, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot 11 Oakdale Research Park in Auditor's Parcel 20018053, from I-1 Research Office Industrial District to IPUD-1 Industrial Plan Unit Development One District, introduced for adoption, third and final consideration by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Close.
Seconded by Dodd. Lori, you get the next one. Discussion?
Roll call. Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item B, same project, Don, resolution?
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 11 Oakdale Research Park in Auditor's Parcel 2018053, Corvail, Iowa, is introduced for adoption by councilmember Gill, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion?
Roll call.
Councilmember Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item seven is Old Hickory Lane Storm Sewer Improvements. Dan, are you gonna give us a bid report?
Lots of hats on here tonight, yeah, so, thank you. Bids were received on September 18th for this project, we received five bids actually for the project. The low bid was received from BWC Excavating of Solon, Iowa, in the amount of $36,940.50. The engineer's estimate was $40,235, so BWC's bid was a little over eight percent below the estimate. We haven't worked with those folks before, so we did check some references, and everything came back fine. So based on that, we would recommend award of the contract to BWC Excavating in the amount of $36,940.50.
Great. What's the, what would be the timetable for initiating construction, assuming this gets approved tonight?
Presuming this is approved tonight, the construction will have completion date of December 1st of this year.
So they'll start pretty soon?
Yeah, right away.
Okay, thanks. Item B is a resolution, Don?
Resolution accepting bids and awarding a construction contract for the Old Hickory Lane Storm Sewer Improvements, introduced for adoption by councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item C, same project, Don, resolution?
Resolution approving the contract and bond documents for the Old Hickory Lane Storm Sewer Improvements, introduced for adoption by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
He beat you again, seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item eight is Pine Hill Estates 8th Edition, this is a resolution that accepts public improvements in this Pine Hill Estates 8th Edition that were completed accordingly. Don?
Resolution accepting certain municipal improvements constructed in Pine Hills Estates 8th Edition, Corvail, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gill. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item nine is 1975 Brown Deer Trail Storm Sewer Project. I entertain a motion to approve pay estimate number one, final to Dave Schmidt Construction in the amount of $20,958.90.
So moved.
Moved by Gill.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Motion passes all ayes. And Don, of the resolution?
Resolution accepting the 1975 Brown Deer Trail Storm Sewer Project is completed, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Dodd. Discussion? Sounds like an old project.
I know, that's what I really looked at, and then I realized, oh, that's the address.
We've been working on that a long time to get this done.
They've been waiting on their money.
It's just an address, yeah, it is an address.
Yeah, it's the storm sewers' address.
Yes, it's at the bottom of the hill on Brown Deer Trail, the address is 1975, yes, near the golf course, west side of the golf course.
With all these brown deer projects, I'd like to thank the citizens for all their help and meetings and everything we've gone through to get a good project for these.
And Scott and Dan have worked hard to.
Yeah, with those neighbors.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item 10 is supplemental agreements, this is agreement for additional design work related to construction administration services for the sanitary and storm sewer improvements on the East Second Avenue and East Seventh Street, and a review and coordination of the latitude development public improvements. This is with Howard R. Green Incorporated Engineering Firm.
Resolution approving supplemental agreement number five to the engineering services agreement with HR Greening for the IRL Sanitary Sewer and Roadway Grading Project 2017, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gill, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item B is a resolution also approving another supplemental agreement with HR Green for additional data collection and design effort that's required for the city to submit an IDALs Water Quality Initiative grant, and for a portion of the storm water management improvements on Coral Ridge Avenue Phase Two.
Resolution approving supplemental agreement number one with HR Greening for Coral Ridge Avenue Improvements Phase Two, introduced for adoption by councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Passes all ayes. Item 11 is access agreement. This is an agreement that will allow Windstar Lines Incorporated, the bus system, to curbside access at the Corvail Transit Intermodal Facility for the purpose of loading and unloading passengers from the 380 Express Bus that will begin serving the corridor between Cedar Rapids and Iowa City.
Resolution approving an access agreement with the East Central Iowa Council Governments, Windstar Lines, Inc., and the City of Corvail for the 380 Express Bus service, introduced for adoption by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion?
Could we have Vicki give a little information about it, I guess, it's interesting.
She was hoping you'd ask that. This is Vicki Rubracher, our Transit and Parking Director.
So this is a service that they have discussed and talked about, and finally, with the construction of the 380-80 interchange, this is part of a little bit of that project, some of the funding for the service is coming from that. They'll have several stops, a couple in the Cedar Rapids area, one in Corvail, and then more on the on-campus area as well as Iowa City. The service is gonna start October 1, which is this coming Monday. Don't really know what to expect yet, given there's a lot of variables, but it'll, between the service that Windstar currently operates there from Chicago to Lincoln, and the buses that we have there, and now with the addition of the 380 Express, we'll have approximately 55 buses through there Monday, daily, Monday through Friday. So it'll be a vital part to our intermodal facility, I think it's a good, it's a good program for us, and we're hopeful that it's successful.
And we've been talking about this a lot at our MPO meetings as well, and I'm just flipping through my notes from the July meeting, and I think the fare, it's $3.50.
One way.
Yes, yeah, so I was gonna say, each way, so about $7.
Round trip.
For a round trip. And I think they're doing a, like a ride-along, or like a, where people can ride the route.
Some of the city officials and stuff they invited to a thing, I believe that's tomorrow.
This Friday.
This Friday, I'm sorry.
This Friday, it'll be picked up, they're picking up officials, and anyone's welcome to join me, I'll be on it, at 10:45 at the intermodal Friday morning, we'll go into Iowa City, then up to Cedar Rapids, and then we'll get back here 12:30, 1 o'clock, something like that, so.
I read in our notes that there will be 22 times that it'll stop in Corvail?
Yep, they'll have 22 stops, their peak service, they'll have like two every hour, and then off-peak it drops to once an hour.
And that's weekdays?
That's weekdays, yes. They don't operate on Saturday and Sunday.
And really nice coaches too.
Very nice coaches.
Over-the-road coaches with Wi-Fi and restrooms, I think.
Yes.
Quite nice. Good, very good, thank you Vicki.
Thank you.
No other discussion, roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item 12 is a 28E agreement that will allow the Iowa Department of Transportation to mitigate stream bank and tree impacts for the I-80, 380 interchange improvement projects on Corvail open space along Clear Creek north of 340th Street.
Resolution approving a 28E agreement, buy-in between the Iowa Department of Transportation and the City of Corvail regarding mitigation for stream bank and tree impacts for the I-80, I-380 interchange improvements, introduced for adoption by councilmember Foster, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gill. Discussion?
Well, can we have a report on this, am I asking too much, Dan?
No, it's fine.
It's interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting. So this is again involving the DOT I-80, 380 Systems Interchange Project, and so they need to expand the footprint of the interchange to do the new ramps they need to do, and obviously you can't really move a systems interchange, so you have to expand where we are, and so in that process, they impacted a number of acres of wetland mitigation bank that we had built along 340th Street for other projects we've had in the city. And so as part of the compensation for the impact that they're having, this is a part of the process they have to go through, so you have to re-mitigate the mitigation site for wetlands, and also do channel improvement along Clear Creek, as well as do tree planting for emergent wetlands as well. And so originally, they'd want to do, purchase wetland bank credits and out of the county, out of the watershed, to mitigate this, and we talked with them and actually worked with them to have that done on our property along Clear Creek, that's why, one of the reasons we bought that property was to do wetland mitigations, to enhance the wetlands along there, and to enhance the experience for the citizens and the environment. And so they have worked with us, and it's been a good job, they worked with us to, again, mitigate these things onsite, immediately adjacent to where they were impacted, so that we will get the benefits of the wetlands in Clear Creek in the city of Corvail.
And the tree planting is right near our creekside ballpark.
Yes, that's true, it's on the east side of 340th Street, right south of Clear Creek, so yeah, so there are a couple sites along 340th, and so yeah, I think would be a great amenity and great positive thing for our park system ongoing in the future.
Big trails.
Big trails.
They've acquired what, 70 or 80 acres to move?
Something like that, as a total on the interchange. I think they got seven and a half acres from us, approximately, because that's what, that ground was also purchased with REAP funds, and so the DNR makes, if you purchase ground with REAP funds for recreational uses, you have to maintain that ground for recreational purposes, and since the DOT is impacting it, the DNR is making the DOT replace that ground for us in like-kind, like-quality, and like-amount of ground for REAP functions for the Recreation Department, and so that process is ongoing as well, and so it's, it'll be a good thing for us at the end of the day.
As long as we're talking about the project, I might as well ask, what's the, is this what's going on in, on the northeast quadrant of the interchange, where you're turned to go up to Cedar Rapids if you're westbound?
Yes, if you see the current, the tree clearing that's been down right against the ramp, that is where they're gonna widen, fill, the fill area there. The new interchange system, instead of doing the loops inside, as, for instance, if you're going east to go to Cedar Rapids, you'll go on a ramp to go north, if you're coming south, instead of turning left on the ramp, you'll go off to the right and up and over a ramp, over the interchange, and come on the right side of the eastbound 80, so instead of internal loops, it'll be external loops, and so it'll be multiple levels, layers of bridges up and over, and so they're gonna do, impacted a big footprint, as Tom said, they've acquired a number of acres of ground.
So they're just clearing trees right now?
Clearing trees, I think they've actually let their first contract, which actually takes some of the dirt from the southwest quadrant where it's high, to the northeast quadrant where it's low, so.
Wow. A lot more to come.
A lot of activity in the next four years, yes.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item 13 is the street finance report, this is the annual report that itemizes the allocation of funds used to construct, repair, and maintain city streets. Don?
Resolution approving the fiscal year 2018 annual street finance report, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Foster. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Item 14, bonds, this is a resolution authorizing a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement for the financing of the design and construction of the wastewater treatment plant facility improvements through the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, SRF, program not to exceed the amount of $36,106,000.
Resolution authorizing and approving a sewer revenue loan and disbursement agreement in providing for the sale and issuance of sewer revenue bond series 2016G, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gill, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Resolution passes all ayes. Excuse me. Item 15 is a new market tax credit term sheet, this is a resolution that approves the term sheet for the new market tax credit equity investment in the Iowa River Landing Arena project. If I'm not mistaken, Tony, and you can nod your head if I'm wrong, this is the, we did this once before, but this increases the amount of new market tax credits that became available.
Yes, it does, it takes into account an increased allocation of tax credits from Iowa business development.
So we get, we get an allocation every year, right?
Not necessarily. This, this is the new market tax credit program that is specifically linked to our arena project.
Okay.
So it's just, this is the first one.
So there's more allocations where we can apply for more?
More this year, and they had a relatively small leftover amount, as I understand it, from a project that, that didn't, wasn't as large as they thought it would be, a different project, and it, it wasn't necessarily large enough for another entire project, so they were looking for a taker that had a, an existing project, and.
Great. Thanks. That's Tony Rupel, our finance director, always let the people at home know who's talking to us. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Didn't read the order.
Oh, might wanna do that.
Resolution approving that certain term sheet, buy-in and between Iowa New Market Tax Credit Fund One, LLC, the City of Corvail, and ArenaCo to make a qualified equity investment to make loans to provide financing for the Iowa River Landing Arena Project, introduced for adoption by councilmember Dodd, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Resolution's approved, all ayes. Item consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented or amended.
Move to approve the consent calendar, items A through double C inclusive.
Second.
Moved by Gill, seconded by Dodd. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Foster.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gill.
Aye.
Dodd.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Consent calendars approved, all ayes. Item 17, Dan, put on your city engineer hat and give us a reconstruction report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Strayer. We've made a lot of progress in the last week, couple weeks on the projects, probably the biggest news on the First Avenue project is that we opened the First Avenue and Sixth Street intersection last week, I think that really helped move traffic along, and it really opens up the neighborhoods, and so it was a great thing to see that get accomplished finally. The contractor's working on the remainder of the improvements north of Sixth Street on the west side, and we hope to mid-October be able to finish those improvements, and then move traffic entirely to the west side, and then allow them to have the east side to tear that up and get that repaved. It is getting late in the year, but the majority of the underground work was on the west side of the project, and so that's completed now, so we anticipate that the east side construction will go much quicker. As far as Coral Ridge goes, all of the mainline paving has been completed on both northbound and southbound lanes, except for the piece from Wheaton north of Reverine, which was the detour originally, and so they're working on that now. All the water main work is done, and almost all the storm sewer work is done, so virtually all the underground work is done, they're working on paving the turn lanes and the through lanes, and putting up traffic signals and streetlights. We'd anticipate somewhere in the third week of October that we would transfer traffic from the detour to the north-southbound mainlines, and then we'll work on finishing the turn lanes and other things yet this year by doing single lane closures, but we'll get people off the detour sometime later in October.
Great. Any questions for Dan? Thank you. Now put on your city administrator hat. Give us the report.
I really don't have anything else I don't think to talk about at this point in time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, just a reminder that next week is the Fall Mayor's Cleanup Week, so on the day of your regular garbage pickup, you can put out materials for picking up. No hazardous materials, or tires, or TV, or constructions, but about anything else. On Saturday, October 13th, is Shred Day, the Fall Shred Day, which is in the parking lot of the Aquatic Center from 8:00 in the morning till noon, so you can have items shredded as well. Also, just wanted to mention that there's a new performance by the City Circle Acting Company this weekend. I believe this is the only weekend that it's playing, Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday afternoon, called The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime. And it's won some Oscars and so forth, so it's a pretty, pretty recognized play, although I hadn't heard of it, but we're going Friday night, so I hope other folks will as well. Also, and I meant to bring it with me tonight, and I left it on the kitchen counter, but in today's mail, coincidentally, I got a flyer from the Department of Music at the University of Iowa, their opera program, announcing their fall opera series, and they're, all the performances are at the Corvo Center for Performing Arts. So, it's really nice. I know there's a couple contemporary operas, Little Women, and then, I forget the other one, but they're not all in Italian. It's kinda caught my eye, I might even try and catch one of those, so. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that I received an invitation to participate in the ground, or the ribbon cutting, I'm sorry, for the Corleville Number Two, they call it, Hy-Vee Store, and that will be on Friday, October 19th, at 8:00 in the morning. So, it's getting closer and closer, the opening of the Hy-Vee Store up there, so that'll make people happy. That's all I have. City Attorney's Report?
At the risk of sounding repetitious, I have to say that Dan and I are both disappointed with Ellen's absence. Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Committee and council members report? Tom?
I'll let you go first. I don't have anything. You're the Rec Department, you're gonna talk about the Altmeier?
Sure.
Okay, I'll let them talk as well. Good idea. I'm good.
Go ahead, and then I'll pull that info up.
Okay, we'll go back and forth. Mitch?
Well, yeah, I guess I was gonna say something Rec Department, well, I see, you know, one of the good perks of being mayor pro tempore is you get to kinda do the fun things when the mayor is unavailable to do so, and was able to do the, I guess, ribbon cutting or groundbreaking of the Rotary Camp Park Facility, which is just east of Camp Cardinal Road, and for those of you who haven't been there, and Tom, the rumor was you'd camp there as a boy, quite a bit, and, you know, it's an absolutely beautiful, beautiful facility, and, well, not just facility, but obviously, you know, just the nature of it. And the facility's gonna be amazing, it's gonna be a full fireplace, shelter house, and everything, so really good, which is why, you know, whether we have, you know, 290, or 290,000 acres, whatever, you know, just, you know, our land and our natural land, you know, it's finite, it's what we have as a city to protect ourselves, and, you know, it's not growing, and this is, I think our, our park superintendent, you know, said it best when he said, you know, if you close your eye, you can't believe you're just not even a mile from the strip. I mean, you're in a whole nother world back there, it's absolutely beautiful, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, so.
Hmm.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Thanks for doing that.
Yep.
Gill?
Yeah, and when we were talking about the Altmeier Family Park Grand Opening is Sunday, September 30th, from 2:00 to 4:00. The address is 3444 Deer Creek Road.